Good evening, everyone. I bring this call today to have the eastward township supervisors and board. Um, it's our country.
... United States of America. The true republic of which is saying is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the poll, please.
Matt Brown, Chief of Police. Thomas Douglas, Deputy Chief of Police.
Krista Hyring, Township Executive.
Cindy King, Director of Fire.
Jeff Widdell, Assistant Editor. Bob Ward, County Consultant.
Tom Wilish, Listener's Office. Supervisor Dennis DeSantis.
Supervisor DeSantis, you're holding. Deputy Minister Supervisor.
Kevin DeSantis, Supervisor.
And Chairwoman Lauren Barrett.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Um, we'll start off tonight's agenda with swearing and averting as patrol officer. Matthew Ceresola.
Matt, you want to bring in your family? Sure. So clearly, Matt is a U.S. Navy member. He graduated in 2012 from IGP Police Academy. Come to us. Another IGP. And he's come to us for 12 years of law enforcement experience. So we're excited to invite him here to take the oath. Okay?
Peter, I am Matthew Ceresola.
Hi, Matthew Ceresola.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, defend.
That I will support, obey, defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And the Constitution of this common law.
That I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge the duties.
Of patrol officer.
Of patrol officer.
In East Norton Township.
In East Norton Township.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
All right. Congratulations, Matt. So much. Picking my guys to come on up here real quick and take a group picture. Yeah, that's what I do. Hey, Rob. Every good LT, you're welcome to come up if you wish.
Not stressful.
Well, does every time.
Every time.
Come on, Matt. Come on, guys. Matt. Everybody. Hold on. Hold on, you're up there. Who's over here? Who's over here? You're fine. Everyone that's here for the law enforcement hearing is helping to leave or stay for the rest of the year.
We have to be light protecting each other. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Now, I would like to announce that the board called executive session was prior to the meeting to discuss matters personnel. Um, we'll start with the approval of our regular amendments of July 22nd, 2025. Um, and so we've all had a chance to review those. Any questions or changes? If not, we'll be simply going to approve.
I'll make that a core motion.
Thank you Supervisor DeSantis.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? That motion carries. Uh, Cindy, did you hear?
You can go.
Okay. Come to the podium and please share your address. All right.
Friend of Leanna, Ordem's Avenue. I'm here to talk to you about East Norton Township ordinance 546. For those of you who don't have those memorized, that is the ordinance that refers to the prohibition of brake retarder systems in a small area of the township. That area is defined in the ordinance as being township line road between Trooper Road and Northern Wales Road, Potchot Road, from Schultz Road to Germantown Pike. As everyone is aware, we are now the crossroads for an ever increasing amount of traffic. People traversing without stopping all go hard roads, including everywhere that 202 project touches. That increased traffic includes a great many trucks. I do not remember how the previous ordinance choice to be just a stretch of this area along Township Road, but I believe that it's time to revisit that and expand it. I live near four major intersections. I'm guessing that we all do. Mine are Decal Township Line, Decal the Germantown, Sweden Township Line, and Sweden Germantown. They are four very large intersections. These are the four corners all around me. All of these areas and the connecting streets would benefit from updated ordinance. For anyone who is not impacted by the sound of brake retarders, it is hard to explain just how disruptive that noise is. I don't pretend to understand why they are used or when, but at any given hour, that sound rips through the area and cuts out above and over any other traffic noise. No sound barrier or storm windows can delete it. In section two of that ordinance, it states, "The Board of Supervisors of the Township of East Norton, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, find as a fact that the operation of engine braking on gasoline-powered or diesel-powered motor vehicles not equipped with exhaust monitors or equipped with defective modified exhaust monitors, commonly referred to as engine brake retarders, so as to create excessive noise through the use of said engine brake adversely affects the public health, safety, and welfare of the township of East Norton, and therefore is a nuisance fact." That is in your ordinance 546. If I understand the process correctly, which I probably don't, East Norton must ask PENDO to evaluate the situation, and then PENDO agrees, the ordinance can be amended. I do not know whether East Norton enforces 546, but it includes fines and possible jail term on time and ignore it. I'm guessing that there are many other areas in the township that would benefit from this updated ordinance, and I'd like the township to start the process adjusting to or changing road conditions. I don't know how that process would be started. I don't know what that entails. This is obviously stuff that you guys know and I do not. But I would really like the township to start thinking about brake retarders in the entire township and specifically in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Chief and Deputy Chief, I've discussed this with them recently back here. We know this is an issue, and I know Chief and Deputy Chief know the process and PENDO. I will say this, my assumption is that we, not that we wouldn't do our best to get it, but I suspect that PENDO probably won't approve this until it's done meeting the project. But that doesn't mean it's not something we can't start, start releasing communication about it. But I'll let Chief and Deputy Chiefs, if they have anything to add on this in particular.
Deputy Chief, this is from your realist.
Yes. So a lot of times with these vehicles, the jake brake is something that's used as a, the trucking companies use that as a safety thing on their vehicles. A safety thing, and it also, it wears, it takes away the wear and tear on the brakes. So a lot of times it's beneficial on hills. That's the biggest area, and they know that that area is not the most elite area. But when they're able to use those jake brakes and not have to use their brakes as much, it's going to save them down the line where they may have to use the brakes on a hill, their brakes don't become as hot. The engine, they're using the engines to slow the actual vehicle down as opposed to the brakes. And then when they actually do need the brakes for some type of safety to stop really quickly, or if they are on a hill, they have more of their brakes doing, it is loud. Sometimes it can be obnoxious, and every truck is obviously built differently too. So some are louder than others. Um, the other thing you have to realize too, you mentioned PENDO. Township line road and Decal Pike are both state roads, so a little bit different than us adopting an ordinance that would be somewhere on the open road.
Now Township Line already has brake retarder ordinance on its interesting section. It's like, just you people. Everybody else.
Where that is right now is very close in proximity to where the quarry is right now. So when this ordinance, I don't know what 546 says it was put in, but I'm sure it was something.
2013.
2013. Uh, something related to when the quarry was a little bit busier and there were more trucks there.
Oh, so, I'm sorry. Um, so the vehicles that you're hearing, are they directly related to the construction?
No, 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 no. No, I mean, this construction noise is a thing.
Yes, 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 that's right. I mean, that's where, I'm imagining that's where the heavy equipment's coming from. But if it's not, I just wanted to know if it was the.
I mean, during construction, that's all you hear. You can't differentiate between any of it. If the reconstruction's real. But there, I have one neighbor who lives right in one of those intersections, and his child wakes up all night long from those car breaks. And I said to him to do this, to do what I'm doing right now. And he was sort of punished by that, so.
If I could suggest we will reach out to PENDO, come back to the next meeting, give you what guidance they give us about timing, process that has to be done. And that is true, some of like Potchot Road is different. You know, there's county roads, state roads, township roads. So there is some difference in the process getting there. But I do understand, I live on a street, on a road, it's a state road, but there's no brake retarder ban. So I understand the loud noise. Some of the older trucks are more problematic as well. But we can, we can come back to you later about the next meeting with more information on it, and we can talk. They are very hesitant to do it broadly. They definitely, that's why you see it in spots. So we can update, we can look at some of the other areas too, so when we go to them, we can, you know, reevaluate what's already has brake retard prohibitions, and then come back to you and see what we can do to try to.
Yeah, thank you for the enlightenment. I'm driven by that sign on Trooper Road now, many, or on Township Line coming off of Trooper. Many times that I've been like, I wonder what that is. I don't. Hey, Matt, you got to get over there.
I think I'm seeing that on the screen.
On screen?
Yeah, on this end.
Okay. Um, and that's, is Potchot Road a county road as well? No, okay, so that's one of ours. So this is, it's an interesting mix of a county road and one of ours. I'm wondering what was the context for the passage of this ordinance back in 2013.
That, you know.
Yeah.
Let's say 10. But I assume truly these come from resident concerns. That's the reality. If you live on it, I promise you, it causes much more of a, you know, if you live two blocks back, you're not as concerned. But if you live there, it's a vertical thing at all times of day. So we will come back with you.
Thank you.
Kristy Hyling, 3010 Greenridge Drive. I was here last month to make a statement about, you know, what is East Norton's ICE policy? And I was really excited to hear that there is, is a directive, what's the term directive? Yeah, super excited. As we know now, things change so quickly, things have escalated, and so now I'm here to ask for more. I recently found out, so you saw that West Norton passed any ordinance that Norristown has as well. So if we passed an official, what do they call it, memorandum or something? We could pass something, and we would maybe try back that we're Norristown, West Norton, and East Norton. Call us something, a policy on the books where we are proactively outright saying we care about our residents, we care about our community, we don't want people living in fear or taking a stand. I know for a long time, people have been trying to fly in the radar to whether or maybe, but we're way past that. People need to now say unequivocally, this is what our township stands for. Like, we won't let this happen to our community. So I'd like to do what West Norton did. I also recently found out that at the Gigante raid in West Norton in June, the big one, where I think it was 14 people were taken, I think four within a couple days were immediately deported out of the country. There were students there from the local school district, and several of them recognized the school resource officer participating in the raid. Their school resource officer, which is terrifying for them. It does not inspire confidence in the schools to have school student, the school resource student, I don't know because, to have these resource officers in the school, knowing that they're also participating in ICE activities. So West Norton's policy specifically says, when school is not in session, they assign school resource, school resource officer is temporarily reassigned to patrol operations. The SRO shall not be assigned to assist in any capacity with immigration-related enforcement, even in the sole and public safety role. So I'd like East Norton to pass a policy, whatever the official term is, and include that to protect students and to make sure they're not having to see people who have been working on ICE in any capacity in their schools. And I hope you like that, Chief, we have that sometimes, I'm more than happy to do that.
Thank you. You're welcome to come on. I understand, and I follow that issue very closely, and I follow it with the county. I know West Norton, but they're playing catch-up. We've had these policies in place, they're not voting, they're township policies that we've had.
But they're not on the website, they're not like official, right?
No, they're official, it's directives here, like.
Okay.
West Norton didn't have, I'm not judging if you, they did it because, well, what happened, they had to do some public, that's what happened, but. There's a lot of law out there. The school resource officer, and again, I'm not judging on what, who did what, and that's not where I'm going with this, but the school resource officer was assigned, was not participating in the raid. I know, I understand what you can say, but wasn't, was doing the backend of it, which you solve a problem with. But if, the difference with this as well, this was an IRS subpoena for a war, which was the local police department, unfortunately, doesn't even have the option to not.
Right, but this was one situation, but this scenario would cover, so this, having this policy might not have applied to that situation, but it could apply for other. And when I looked at the township website, all the ordinance, since I did searches for immigration, ICE law or like federal policy, I didn't find anything, so I'm not, like, if it's there, it's not searchable?
Yeah, no, it's internal policy.
Yeah, but we need to, I would love to see something external where we're actually taking a stand, saying this is what we stand for.
And I'm set for it, I'll be glad to bring some information to you. I understand, I'm in every county, I know everything that comes in, the welcoming, there's all these different things. I know inside out, unfortunately, that we're in this position. The county already does everything they can, and I promise you this, from the chief to every staff member here, understands this serious issue and understands what the township's role in it is and what it isn't.
And I, we talked about this last time, and I told everybody.
No, I didn't.
But it's just, but it's just, and you're going to see it. And I saw it, and then, I mean, I'm going to these meetings now, and like, probably, like, people need to know that it exists so they feel safe. I mean, if I wasn't seeking this out, I wouldn't know. So I just, I want everyone to feel secure and know that this is.
So what, so what we'll do is we'll review it, but I will tell you as a member of this board, we're doers, not sayers. Everyone's protected here.
Yeah, yeah, but it's just, but the.
I understand, I understand the optics, I understand what you're looking for, but in the meantime, let me put your mind at ease. We live the word, we don't just print the word. And so you're, so you're, you're good.
And if I can just add, because this is where, and I know where you're going, and I know your voters are, your, all of your intentions are positive, I get it. Um, and I know the fear that's out there with you. There is half a mindset that says, I watched, we all watched, we all knew what West Norton is going to do with their, we follow it very closely. I almost don't want, and I know this could be a bit controversial, but I almost don't want people to think they can hang their hat on a welcoming policy. Because I promise you, we've seen instances of ICE, they don't give a damn what ICE, what policies you have. And they don't care if there's no recourse, and I'm scared for that, and we're all scared for that, true.
But the, because I, I am working and meeting and hanging out with families and the people who are affected, and they're terrified. And they don't know, if they're trying to find this info, it's not searchable, and there's no policy. So like, I, I trust you, like, I've been here, I agree. But like, people need to know, they need to be able to see these policies.
We can bring you back to some, my.
One of my fears of publicly passing an ordinance that is, is just words on a paper and that we can't defend beyond the policy and the directive that we already have, is that that will attract unwanted attention.
There's going to be attention and controversy no matter what, but that's what I'm saying, like, we're past the time of like, trying to play it safe and not attract that. We've got to start scanning that first stuff, because, I mean, like, we're talking in DC. Not that that would ever be East Norton, but like, we really need to start taking a stand. It's easy for me to say, but I would, like I said, I'll help if you need.
Well, I want to find a way to take a stand that actually means.
Yeah, yeah.
My supervisor, DeSantis, who has said, like, our chief of police has said, like, our.
You just need a way to let the community know that you're paying out for them.
Um, I thought, because it's come up in every meeting this summer, frankly, so, you know, and we made that public, that, that policy, that directive available to anyone who's come here and asked.
But no one knows to ask.
Yeah.
And people, and people, I mean, think about who's going to come to this building and say, can I have your immigration policy? I'm a middle-aged white woman, like, I'm totally cool doing that. There's a lot of people who don't feel safe.
I was at the Gigante raid. I was one of the witnesses, I was one of the photographers. I have never been so frightened or scared of this country in my entire life. I've never seen anything like that, except now in DC, but I have never seen anything like that personally. I was one of the witnesses, I was one of the photographers, and no one should have to go through that. It was an IRS raid for the owner. And 14 random people were scaring.
It was the guys, it was, it was totally, it was.
Yeah, they came prepared for more.
And we all, and we all know that. All, we all know that that's what that was. Um, from immigrants, you're from immigrants, a lot of us are from immigrants. She's her generation, I'm like third. We all, we all understand, and you, you stand with them as much as you can. And I'm sorry, I have to make one comment back. As far as the SRO is concerned, you know, when, um, and I'm making political for a second, so sorry, guys. It's my last meeting. When Kamala Harris was asked about her record on capital punishment when she was an attorney general, her answer to that was, it was my job. I put people to death because that was my job. And that SRO was just doing his job that day. He didn't assign himself. So before we judge the SRO, so, as a, as a, as a people, as a society, remember that that person, I don't know if it was a man or a woman, it doesn't matter, that person was assigned that day. They didn't say, hey, I'm going to go, I'm going to go to the grid raid, and I'm going to get people. That wasn't a choice.
Right, I know what I'm saying, it was, I'm just saying.
I know, I know. And now I'm going to, now I'm saying.
Yes, you don't need to see that. We can be proactive about making sure that doesn't happen again.
We can't be proactive about that not having any luck for this situation, for that situation. That person didn't choose that assignment.
Right, and I was just.
That's all, I just want to put it out there.
Yeah, we could prevent this in the future.
Thank you so much. I'm chair.
I know, because it's horrible, we're in, we're in unprecedented times, that's for sure. We're in unprecedented.
My parents were still alive, I would be afraid to go out.
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
What I, what I will say is, it's, I, I have also been, we have all been following this. It's hard to, impossible to talk. I think it's a, it's a reasonable expectation that we will look at other options available to us, including potentially amending our directive to include excluding SROs during the school year from participating in this type of activity when they're not performing their duties as an SRO. Is, that's, that's the best we can promise right now.
I'll end with this, my biggest fear.
Yeah.
That West Norton, and West Norton knows this. They passed a, an ordinance, they, they, they looked, they looked at everybody else, but we all have the same information. If that happened again tomorrow, that policy would not protect anyone. And that's what scares me. So my, my perspective is, I don't, I don't want anybody to have a false sense of security. There are certain law enforcement, quasi, because it's expanded, contract, the federal government, that are not necessarily following, following the rules, and that's what scares many people, right? I mean, you have, I happen to have a immigrant daughter-in-law, wasn't born in this country. We're running for, my son is extremely paranoid, and I wouldn't say paranoid, he was paranoid. Now he's, now he says paranoia is at the window, it's serious, it's real, it could happen. She works in the west end, so it's with the county, it's a fear every day. So we follow these things very closely, and my fear is that, she lives in West Norton, and that policy would not protect her any different today. Not because of the intentions of the West Norton, or the intentions of East Norton, because the intentions and the lack of any kind of parameters or any kind of restraints on certain. You see where I'm going? I think we're all the same.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just, I'll say one last thing, I totally get that. It's a sucky situation, but I just think perfect is the enemy of good. Just because it might not change anything, that, you know, it might not perfect, we can still do something.
Yes.
And I think we should, instead of what we could do.
We can talk about more language, gladly bring more language, and again, we're, we've been proactive. We, that policy has been worked on since it was started in February. So I can tell you, we were way ahead of the game, deliberately so, because we were concerned about these issues. So I just want to assure you, we'll, we'll talk about more, we'll bring some language, but we, as a township staff, everyone from supervisors down to our attendants at the parks, are aware, we're conscious of it, and we're looking to protect all our, our community in every way we can. So just know that as we go through this.
And I'm not putting you on the spot, Chief Brown, but is the person who is stuck in the network, does you like to add to the conversation?
Yes. Well, I would just say that we're here, we're not going anywhere. We're here to protect the citizens, visitors, those that work here. I'm glad that you guys come out and express your views and take it all into consideration and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Sue Went, 218 Woodmont Road. Got to comment on that because I'm glad to see that we have something somewhere in writing. And it would be nice if we all knew it, even though I agree with you, they're not paying attention. I am terrified, I'm going out on protests someday. They're going to be coming after the protesters. Let's face it, we've got a second Hitler here. And, anyway, that wasn't my pain, but I'm terrified myself. Okay, I have a question for the police department. A couple of times I've gone to drop something off or get some information at the police department downstairs, and there's nobody there, and you've got to ring a bell, and somebody will talk to you, and they'll pull somebody off patrol. Can't we get a person there, at least during daylight now?
We do have somebody there, but if she's on vacation, like in the summer, which may have been the timeframe that you came.
It was two different times then, not, we're close to each other.
We have somebody hired full-time that does work eight to four, and unless she's on break or sick or on vacation, as it was probably most recently, that, well, that door is.
I haven't done there close recently, but I have some stuff to, to, you know, used medicines I'm supposed to drop off. And I don't know if the police department, if fire department wanted, but I bought a lot of toys, stuffed animals for choice, tots. And I bought so many, my daughter is storing some, and I still have some at home, and I thought maybe the police or fire department would like them for emergencies.
As we, as we.
And they're grandkids.
Yes, as we approach the Christmas season, the, uh, Plymouth Ambulance is a very large toy drive, and they go down to the city hospitals, and, uh, they collect a lot, so if you could hold it for just a bit longer, uh, we would.
We'd carry over them, but that's. It's, it's just like a white ghostly bag full, not, not a good one, but.
If you really drop it off, uh, I will take it and I'll leave it for the ambulance.
Sue, if you want me to come get it, I'll come get it and bring it over.
All right. If I know that somebody's gonna be there, I don't mind taking it over, it's just, I've come a couple of times and nobody has.
And we, we do have, as she said, we do have, uh, full-time and a part-time down there, but they are, either they're, someone could be out, but also, we get a ton of calls, they could be in the middle of something with someone else, and it's just, um, you know, the days of having your own local dispatch down there, you know, that ended.
Yeah.
Almost twenty years ago at this time, so some places don't have anyone, I can't imagine that, but we do our best to keep it as, as covered as ever, but it was a lot.
I'm glad to know, because I can really feel uncomfortable having somebody have to come off the, the street.
Understood. But, but, but don't, because that's what they're, they're, they're willing to do those kinds of things, so.
And I'm glad you're proactive about, uh, those idiots.
Um, Gary Shack, thirty twenty-one, Cottage Lane. Uh, this has been talked about multiple times, Aqua. And every time somebody gets a bill, it's on Facebook, um, I just, it really frustrated me because I happened to see my mother-in-law's, uh, water, uh, sewer bill, and she lives in Westmore. And for three months, hers was fifty-five dollars, mine was a hundred dollars for one month. Is there any way township can get that back in an ambulance or something, sir?
Um, again, we, we're in lawsuit with several others, we have a whole, a whole thing going on with them. Um, to be fair, if the tenants are bummed at right now, you wouldn't be paying fifty-five per quarter because of all the, the work that needs to be done. So we depend quite a bit, and that is, I don't wanna, I, you've probably heard me before, I don't wanna disparage prior administrations twenty years ago, um, but they kicked the can down the road, there was very, very little infrastructure down here. When I got here, nine and a half years ago, there was a, um, study being done by a sewer, uh, academic organization to look at our pipes in the ground, and soon after I got here, the report said we needed forty million dollars worth of repairs, right away. Um, we were going to have to go, if we went out for forty million dollars, if we, we, at twenty million, we already went up to such a high, a high limit. So, again, not, there's no easy answers to this. We, we are, as we've said many times, but many municipalities are disgusted with, not just the sale, but the PCU, which is appointed by the state, points these members, they are, as you can see, it's not so topless. PA American has that too, they're gonna be going for a third. PICO, every, every nine months, they're going in for, asking for other increases, and they're never saying no. The last time Aqua went in, they asked for, uh, I'm just making these numbers up, but you'll get the, you get the point. They asked for a six percent raise. Never have you heard this, but the PUC members said, "We think you need more than that, we need a nine percent." Where the, where the hell in your life does that ever happen, right? Like, I go in for a raise, we're giving it to you more. But that happened.
That's what I mean, once.
Yeah, I know, you did such a good job. But, but that literally happened at the Pennsylvania Utility Commission. And we have reached out to our state representatives and state legislator, or state senators. Um, I can tell you, Representative Bradford is very active about it, we're meeting again about this after the budget passes. That's really, because they're, they live in Harrisburg, we need a, we need a budget passed, or we're not gonna, you know, there's a lot of things we're, we're gonna be missing. Um, but.
It's just my water bill is less expensive than my sewer bill.
Yes, I dealt with numerous people, I, I never, you know, I never, I go over the bills to make sure we're all understanding what we're understanding. Um, it is very common for a sixty-dollar water bill, or a fifty-dollar water bill, and a sixty-dollar, I'm just using a sixty-dollar, um, sewer bill. That shouldn't be, um, and there's no excuse for PUC members to just continually raise this every year, year and a half, at, at, at most. So that's what we're going on, there is some legislation out there in the House, again, nothing's happening because of the budget, but there is some legislation to re, reform the whole process, because it just can't, it just can't continue. I'm saying PICO's, in their own personal bubble, PICO just went up, and I happen to have a few things at home that are, are killing me, and I, I, I know, I read the articles. PUC gives them, um, tremendous amount of money. Um, in, in fact, I'll, I'll say this, if you saw, it was a press conference in Northtown, a week and a half ago, that said, um, good message, PICO was putting money in, so many millions of dollars for people who are having trouble paying their PICO bills. I think we all look at that and say, boy, that, that's a good thing to do, that lower the.
Just lower the bill?
Lower the damn bills for everybody. Make, you know, do more with less, that's our motto, this, this board's motto, since I've been here. Um, we, we work like dogs to make that happen. Not everybody seems to do that, and, and that's what gives government a bad name, and, and we're trying.
I was looking at my place two weeks ago, I'm like, how can I run a place with like, that many? You know, I didn't turn it off, and.
I didn't hear that. Chief, you didn't hear that?
So you were quiet, this was raised a couple of meetings ago, I asked the, like, any update on the legislation, or, sorry, the legislation installed, any update on the litigation?
I asked that, yeah, yeah, I did ask you, right, this one's your part, this, yeah, it was the right thing. Um, we expect this particular litigation, either way, to come, come over. Either way, they, they render their verdict, we expect it to go to Pennsylvanese Supreme Court, that's what I was told today by, um, our solicitor's office. So it's a serious thing that everyone is taking, um, there's consumer advocate groups involved in the lawsuit, there's a whole lot. Now, does that, that sounds all great and good, I know you all pay sewer bills, too, but you should pay less. The reality is, this is great news that we're moving forward, we're trying all these things, but today, it doesn't affect a bill today, you're working and you're paying, so. But we're doing it a few weekends tomorrow.
And call, and call, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Call your state legislature.
No.
Like, really, we're, we're on our end saying, you need, we need help, but for constituents, that's who they need to hear from, so.
Is there a, a device they can put on your house, so when you're not, like, if you're pro-washing or?
Alternate heaters, they have, if you go in the Aqua, the only reason they have it, they never had it in the history of Aqua, until we, I'll use good language, complain like hell.
And they charge you.
And they charge it for it, it's not, it's not the.
My numbers come out exactly the same if I do their plan.
Yeah.
If I use their plan, or pay for their plan, my bill is exactly the same.
But, you see, it's, it's not a, I can't say it, it's not something great, but it's, um, it's something, is what concerns me.
But I wanna directly answer your question, and I, and I'm kicking myself, because the last time this came up, we had just come from PSATs, and this was the topic of conversation, as it was last year, with townships of our size, um, many of whom faced the same seemingly insurmountable, um, maintenance costs of their sewer systems, and so sold them to Aqua or other, other buyers, um, and are now facing ridiculous rates. Have, is there any precedent for townships buying their sewer systems?
Yes, it can be reversed if a court orders that.
Okay.
So it's definitely something that can happen.
Okay, is that what we're suing for, or not?
Our initial thing is, follow the contract, but I will say this.
Yeah, you agreed not to raise rates above this level.
Now, I will say this, there's two different issues at this point, and this is part of the problem. There is that issue, which we, they misrepresent, they have not followed the contractual term. But there's a bigger issue that have all joined this, this lawsuit statewide, because now, even if you didn't sell or anything, water and sewer, the PUC, or every time they go to the PUC, the PUC is raising, is giving them okays, so it's beyond that. Like, you know, I live right down the road from another township, I have Aqua water, it's through the roof, because they've given them three raises in two years, so it's a bigger issue.
And do I understand this correctly, that one of the board members of the PUC was, used to be in Aqua?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, they're shared owners.
No, it's all.
That's what they, so when they retire from one thing, they go to the others.
And refusal is not a word they've learned?
No, so our argument, our argument to our state reps and our state senators, who share, the ones we're talking about, share, is we need people, and I don't wanna say activists, because sometimes activists, you know, people can portray activists in a bad way, right? They can say, oh, you're this, or you're that, but somebody who is not in the industry, hasn't been in the industry, has no, you know, I'm retired, I'm not in it. I'm not judging everyone who has been in the industry. Sometimes, uh, if you recall during World War II, when they, they started the, and, and the third, when they started the stock exchange, they picked Joseph P. Kennedy to be the head of it, because they said he manipulated it prior to the stock exchange, and they wanted to put the guy who hadn't manipulated the best in charge of it, so he could cut down a little crap. So in theory, having some people that have been in the industry that see the rewards of it, it's a good thing. But not in this case, it has to be the right people, it has to be centered on the community and what we pay. Um, now, we'll argue, again, we can talk about this for a long time, we'll argue about clean water, safe water, we all understand that, and it's all, all part of, um, the greater discussion, but rates matter, and they can't water-sort. If you're in other places, gas, electricity, it's all a problem, they're all regulated by, generally regulated by the Pennsylvania Utility Commission, and those members have to have a different mindset when they go to the serious, so.
May I ask you a question, Oliver? If we brought it back theoretically.
Yeah.
We'd still have to pay them all the upgrades.
Yes.
To be, to be compliant.
And, and again, not blaming the past, because there's a lot of other reasons, but we didn't, for many years, we were, which many places don't know, prior to this, we were getting fined every year by the EPA, because we had cracked pipes, we had leakage from our sanitary sewer system into the environment, which would go down into street use. So we had tens of millions of dollars that we had to stop that, because we're a whole community, we're a built-out community. When we go in, when our public works, which is the best around, when they go in the inlets of your street, you'll see a lot of them are, uh, caving in, they're put in brick by brick, that's not done anymore, but ours, we are, every year, we're out replacing a ton of them, because they're so aged, aged out. They're falling apart, and we go in and re, we do everything the right way, that are gonna last, you know, um, hopefully a hundred years. Um, but these are all, that's the way they did it sixty years ago. So it, there's so much work involved in all of these projects. Um, there's no easy answers, but having the right mindset and the right motives and the right goals behind, and the right ethics, I think makes, makes the difference. Sometimes it's bad news, we don't like bad news, but I think we all wanna, we wanna hear it. If you got something bad news, I'm gonna know it, don't, don't hide it from me, so.
Sorry, last question, I don't believe you want. Um, do we know, has, did Aqua make the improvements that we would have had to make, or are they?
Oh, they're, they're in the process of it, in fact, they are just.
Man, but they were not small things, taking, you know, over a person many years.
They just, six months ago, they announced, I don't know the number, five, one, six million, more, another project. They put off, we asked them, there's a major project on Sweden, the cause, which is going to, they dig under a main, they would have to close it for months, Sweden. They were about to close it, right in the middle of two oh two. And schools, this was last year, and I said, as much as I want this seven million dollar project, how about if there's a fire in Colston? Burn baby burn, because we can't get, the chief can't get his, uh.
We can't go down, please.
No, we, no, we met, and we said, the fear is.
Yeah.
We have a fire in Colston, how do we get to it?
Yeah.
Because you can't, two oh two, you might as well take a horse and buggy, you're not.
I was just gonna say, there was a time that everybody must eat buck bands out of their house, recently, everybody's wanted a horse.
So we met, and we said, you're gonna have to put this off, we have a public safety, we have to look for it. So those types of claims are there, but we also did, not to, not to bring up, but PICO just announced another seven million dollar, um, uh, line of their, um, different pump stations that they just put out, so seven million dollars, thanks for these nine towns or so. It's not, the money's not going into infrastructure, but clearly, the decisions you make, and you know this, and the further you ask, the decisions elected officials make, many of them don't, won't affect that, it'll affect twenty years from now. But that's, that's what sometimes people don't think that way, but I know we've discussed it many times, the decisions we make, that we make in investing, and, and taxes, and all those kinds of things. We sit back in there and say, in 2034, we'll be, we'll still be good in this respect because of the decisions we made today. And I'm not sure that has always been the case in every situation, and we pay the price for that, we pay catch-up instead of getting ahead of it. And unfortunately, in a lot of our infrastructure, we are, um, in that situation. If you're in newer place, out above Limerick, have new development, and all those new moans, new downmo, they don't have the same, everything's new. The infrastructure is brand-new, not falling apart, terracotta pipes, um, much different. But when you live in an older, built-out community, it comes with challenges, I mean, it is.
Vintage.
Yes.
Okay, um, any comments by my supervisor?
I wanna say, um, you know, recently, our police department was, took part of apprehending someone that shouldn't have been in the community, so to the chief and the rest of officers, thank you very much, for all the work you did, and I believe, uh, the county sheriffs were involved, of the department, and, uh, I just wanna say thank you for that, please give my commendations to your team as well, I was doing a good job with that. And to everyone here in East Norton, just know, everyone is welcome. No matter who you are, no matter where you come from, everyone is welcome. And we operate like that Dublin Water or that Iceberg, although things might look calm on the surface, if you go beneath the surface, East Norton is working very hard, and doing a lot of things behind the scenes where you might go, they're not doing anything, but trust me when I say, when you sit on this side, we get a lot of reports, we hear a lot of different things, we have a lot of discussions, you know, and we hear from you. East Norton is working hard to keep you safe, to, to keep our community up kept, and to keep our community very vibrant. So please know that we are working for you in everything that we do, thank you.
Um, can, can you save it for?
I'm just gonna say thank you for all that you do, I, I come in here and complain, but I appreciate, I know how much you do, and it's easy for me to comment my suggestions, I see that, and I appreciate that.
No, it's not easy, it's, it's not even, even for a, a white woman to want to move, it is, it is hard, it's intimidating, and so I appreciate all of you that commented.
No, I appreciate you all, I mean, I'm saying that, yeah, it's.
We're having an appreciation.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on, um, whole business.
Whole business, a work bid of decommissioned equipment, I'd like to call in Chief of Police Matthew Brennan, for a good item.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSanto. Uh, two items that were previously listed on municipal, did not sell, it was approved at the June twenty-fourth meeting to post these items. We have reposted them, and of the two items, which one was the telephone system, the other one was the light bar, the telephone system sold for twenty-five dollars, was the highest bid. Uh, to a Joey Panchenko out of Lincoln, New Jersey. So we are requesting approval to have Joey come and pick up the thirties for forty-some old telephone sets that we are not going to use for twenty-five dollars.
I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Cash?
Second pass. All in favor?
Aye.
And, and you're, you're not, stop pushing, Karen, you don't feel the, the.
All right, uh, appointment Director of Finance, Township Treasurer, I'd like to call and tell some consultant, Rob Hart, to remove this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Coleman, this is really just formally our new, uh, I say new, but I'm sure you feel like you've been here a while, once you get thrown into the mix. Uh, but our, our new Finance Director, Cindy King, um, is already doing the job as Finance Director. Appointing her Treasurer is basically the same, um, role, it's just the fiduciary duty as an actual appointed office by the order. It's all the same reporting requirements, everything she does now, currently, is just going as, as an early appointed official, so. That's, unless she says she doesn't want it right now, um, that's, that's what's before you.
You haven't scared me away yet. Yes, the key word.
Yes.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that, inform motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Brennan.
Second.
And Supervisor Coleman, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose, put your hands up. Any opposed, put your hands up, welcome to our new Treasurer. Thank you.
New business, accept Supervisor Dennis DeSanto as the betterment of DJ's resignation. I'd like to call on our attempted consultant of our two.
I can start it, and then have the chairwoman take it from there, but I just know we are, I'll have more to say at the end, but I got one of our supervisors that's been asked to make it tonight, and we'll have more comments and staff comments afterwards, but.
DJ, would you like to share?
Due to personal reasons, I'm stepping away from my seat on the Board of Supervisors after 10 years. I'm, you know, when I first ran, Matt Bradford told me that the best campaign was good governing, best campaigning was good governing, and when I ran for reelection, I ran unopposed. So that told me that I, I did okay, and my goal for this was always to leave this township better than I found it. And I'm going to toot the horn of the, of the board, of the boards that I've worked with, I've worked with so many supervisors over the years. You know, Township Day was, was like a yard sale when I got here, it's the biggest in Level Montgomery County now, it's huge. We didn't have a trick-or-treat, a trunk-or-treat, we didn't have a tree lady. Our group program was by two minutes coverage, which was like steel coating, we were able to, we were able to do a lot of things together, and when I say the board, the most important people, and I've always said this, are the people who sit there, and the people who are on Public Works, and the people who answer the phones, and this building was revamped by our Public Works Department. We did, we did a lot of things, and we didn't raise taxes in my tenure. I am, I love this township, I'm not leaving the township, but it's time. So for the dozens and dozens of people watching, I thank you for, for allowing me the time to serve because it has been, it has been my honor, it's, it's been a part of who I am. My, when I ran the first time, I'm trying to not ramble, when I ran the first time, my daughters were five and two months, and Georgia is my oldest, and she got really quickly, like, you know, my dad runs this town, like, it was, it was, she would tell the kids on the street when they want, you know, they, when they want to play their game, it was fun, but however, whenever, I didn't get to speak to the officer who was, who was sworn in tonight, but one of the things that I always remind the police officers when we interview them, I tell them this story, and I think this epitomizes what it started as. My daughter, as I said, was five, so she was in kindergarten at Combe, and two months into the school year, they had an active shooter drill, and they were all, all these little five-year-olds were huddled behind a desk, and they were crying, and Georgia stood up, the teacher told us this, Georgia stood up and said, guys, don't cry, it's okay, my friends are going to come and keep us safe, but they, they know me and they know I'm here, and they're going to keep us all safe, you're going to be okay. Our police and fire do a phenomenal job of being approachable to our, our most vulnerable, and I think that the people who I have served on this day as with have always tried to be the most approachable when we're Community Day and someone has a question, and if we're in Weiss, Vance, Weiss wouldn't go to Weiss with me because everybody wanted to talk to me about the Aqua sale and, and, but, but none of us minded, ever minded, and I still don't mind taking the time because that's group governing, that's not partisan governing, that's group governing. I've seen Summa Lachlan more in 10 years than I've seen my mother. At least John Cole is here all the time, the fact that this is my last meeting is really sad, but it's really nice to see so many people here. And tell your friends to come, tell them to be quiet when they come, I'm telling them to come because this is, this is how the township gets stronger, and it's from people understanding that sometimes you don't get the answer that you like, but you do get an answer. So I'm going to stop rambling and just say thank you, and thank you to the four of you for all of your support in the last year, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, DJ. I, I will miss your sense of humor most, I feel like we just started building a new fan base and now all are under expectation.
I'm pecking from the crowd.
All right, I'll work, I'll work. No, thank you for everything, thank you for everything you've taught me as a, as a relatively new member to the board, I just, you know, really appreciate all your service to the township, I'm glad you will continue to be a part of this community, can't imagine without, so thanks.
Yeah, DJ, I'd like to say that, I'm going to thank you for not only for being a friend, but also for all the hard work you did for this township. I mean, people don't, like Sam had said, you don't see what's under the iceberg, you don't see what's going on and the work that we're doing, and you were, you were, you did a human's job of being a supervisor, and thank you.
What do you two have to say?
Maybe just say, you know.
Well, I want to say that, you know, when I was asked, or I was given the opportunity to be selected to replace supervisors who had left the township or had to move for work reasons or whatever, it was unique, I had no intention of being a politician, I wanted to be the other people or a public servant, and I think, you know, I tried to keep that going, but there were four of us that ran in 2017, and you were the only sitting member of the board, there was, of five people, not much, four of us were looking to be elected to, to work with you. So that was unique, and I just remember you're, you worked tirelessly to get us elected, and I appreciated that, and, you know, we might not have agreed on things over, over years, but we, and that goes to, to the comment about, things are so calm on the surface, but underneath we're probably going to help. When we come out here and, you know, we don't have three-two votes or four-one votes, we have, everybody agrees, and it's not because we really agree, it's because we work an app, you know, we, we, we call each other, we talk about what, what are the issues, and, and we can't do that.
More than three of us.
We're probably like sunshine, you know, so you can't have majority to talk about that, but we communicate with each other enough that it, it comes out looking like, okay, we got our act together. And there's some boards that don't have that issue, don't have that, that luxury that we have, we try working together, we always think the same, and thankfully we don't because you're one of the diversity of opinions, and we try to do the best we can for the community, and DJ's, you know, he has worked his tail off to make this township better, and the, the, saying that we do more with less is, is very true, and, you know, I know you haven't been around for the full 15 years we had on the tax increase, but you've been around for that 10, and we've increased what we do for the township, the opportunities that we give in recreation and public safety, and even in service to the community, and without that tax increase, and that's, that's, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, a lot of people can't say, you'd be able to say that. And we, the four of you being in these seats out here, yeah.
We got to say, still.
Lastly, I was going to say, DJ, you've been a both information since I moved to township, especially joining the board. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything, all the guidance you've given me personally, you know, even when it came to looking at this seat before I was appointed, you know, the first first time, but I'm glad to be here and I'm glad to call you a colleague and a friend, and you will, I'm definitely going to miss your sense of humor. You know, and, and our means, and so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'll speak for the township staff, for everyone, and I personally.
No, DJ wants you to go one by one. Start the back.
As you want to say, you know, listen, you're not just a supervisor, you're, you've become good friends over 10 years, and if you're doing this and you're doing the job we're supposed to do, you, you build the bonds and those relationships because you're in it, and you're making, you're making tough decisions, you're also making good policy, you're doing good work, you're affecting people in a positive way, and you've done that every, every board you've been on for 10 years, this board included, you really, you have a group of, and I say this for, for all, you all have different personalities, you all have different perspectives, or as Jake said, they always don't, they can be contradictory or, or, or contrary in some ways, but you work together, and it's all about respect, because you don't have to all have the same view, if you treat each other with respect, you come and work to a common ground, you, many times, that is the best alternative over time, and it really brings people together and brings issues together. That's what I feel we're missing so, so much in Washington and other places, but you're a model for that as a group, and you've led it for 10 years, and you've really got a major effect, a positive effect in this township. I'll leave it by saying my first job, I worked for apartment in the summer, I hated it, but worked like a dog, and the first thing he said to me, whatever you do, leave your mark, whatever you do for, leave your mark. One day I can say, you left your mark when you started the township.
Thanks, very much. Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept my resignation.
So he said, I'll move that we accept Lieutenant Santos' resignation effective September 15 of 2025.
Thank you, Vice President Coleman, any second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Vice President Coleman. All in favor?
Aye.
Karen, with some attention, that motion carries.
If I can comment one thing, because I know DJ can say this, he stays because he wants to get enough work, another Township Community Day, we have coming up, and all that goes along with that, so he said, September 15, he told me that.
He's going to introduce the band.
My, my favorite community story was when Bob Kelly came and all the members of the Board of Supervisors took a picture of him with him, and I wasn't in the picture, if you look at those pictures, I was plunging a toilet in the parts of my building, because there was nobody else to do it, so that, that was not my job that day.
You were a lot of pressure and pity when you went. It's a hot day.
Yes, yes, and, thank you.
And, thank you, and Mr. Hart, should we comment on the process or, or back?
Why don't you let it, because that's, that's back here.
Okay, um, next, DJ?
Next item on the agenda, 2026 Minimum Municipality Obligation, I'd like to call on our Financial Director, Cindy King.
Yes, so minimum municipal obligation is required by state law as our minimum contribution to the pension plan. So we have three township sponsored pension plans, the Police Defined Benefit Plan, the Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Plan, and the Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Plan. And I had provided a document for the board, and I'd like to know that in the document that was provided, the 2023 and 2024 investment yield history figures, they're estimated because the, we don't have the official figures yet, but those are pretty close estimate of what they'll be, and I can say the August, as of August, the 2025 yield is performing at year-to-date at roughly 0.6%. So we're in good shape this year as far as that goes, and then based on the estimated yield history for 2023 and 2024, it's likely the funding percentage will increase in 2025, but again, we won't know that until we receive a 2025 valuation document. And we do use, Conrad Sequel uses a time-weighted methodology for pension contribution, which means this, it kind of keeps us in a line in the middle, so even though the yields might vary significantly, and I think that went into effect in 2019 because there was some, some big changes and there were some negative yields, so by definitely using like a seven-and-a-half percent methodology, it kind of keeps us along the middle line, and our line goes a little more like this instead of like this, so that is good, but I, I see that, I do think that in 2025, when that's all set and done, it'll be, it'll be in a little better shape. So as, as that, we are proposing the MLO for 2025 to be filing amounts for the Police Pension Plan, $967,068, for the Non-Uniform Pension Plan, $379,797, and then Non-Uniform Plan, $36,000, and we are also, we are anticipating the receipt of over $500,088 that will be applied toward the Police Pension. Any questions?
If there are questions, we will make a motion to.
I'll put that in form of motion to approve in 2026, MLO, this will do, this will be the. Second.
Thank you both, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, Karen, that motion carries.
Approval of amendments to PUD policies and procedures of quality policeman, Brennan, review the item.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto. Pennsylvania's Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, known as PLEAC, is a PUD association program which helps police departments follow current best practices in law enforcement. These non-police have been accredited since May of 2020, excuse me, 2005, and every year, PLEAC comes out with changes that are needed for policies. Before you were 13 different policies that minor changes have been made, and we are requesting the board's approval to those changes, for those changes, and if you have any questions, it's very boring, but I can go into anything that you may want regarding the 13 policies.
We used to, we typically call this housekeeping, which is so great, because I, when I, when I speak to the chief, I say, substantial changes, we should talk about more, many of them are clarifications, that type of stuff.
I have my questions.
Make a motion for your back.
I'll put that in form of motion.
And Vice President Coleman, any second?
A second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, Karen, that motion carries.
Upperization to advertise an amendment to the Township ordinance regulating massage partners, I'd like to call on Township Solicitor, to review the second.
Thank you Supervisor Coleman. In the meeting package tonight, you'll, you'll see a proposed ordinance amendment text, and a notice, notice of advertising posted, requesting the board's consideration to authorize advertisement of the amendment to the Township ordinance regulating massage partners. So this ordinance was actually passed on a firm vote of the board a few months ago, I believe, and so this is just being amended slightly to add some language specifically with regard to back-of-the-merch check requirements, no major substantive changes, just revising to provide some further clarification.
Have we gotten any questions for the, since advertising the original?
Yeah, we've had some open applications, we have not gotten much feedback from massage establishments, other than, this is really, this change is just, this is, for any alternative therapy place, there is some investigation meeting, if whoever working in your establishment, they have to have, go through a criminal background, this is basic stuff, but the language was a little vague about who has to, is any alternative therapy.
therapy or massage technician. It's just doing that basic background checks of things like that required. We haven't gotten much feedback, I mean, most of it, of course, but it's part of something that many townships are going to add into the lead, have to the township, several others are moving this way, have some some basic requirements on them. You know, there's sanitary health considerations that go into these these things, and in practice, no township really had any. So all the townships are catching up on this because they're they're growing, so that's really where we're at.
Um, any other questions? For the informed motion?
I'll put that before the motion.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSanto.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSanto, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it is, that motion carries.
Okay, outstanding bills, monthly expenses, I recall our director of finance and newly appointed trainer Cindy King, if you would do this.
Sure. The fourth period of July twenty second to August twenty fifth, the accounts payable bills totaled five hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty cents, and the payroll was six hundred forty thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Also, I just would like to note, just to kind of get all of the bills totaled up for the year, there are a couple that had not had prior approval, based on kind of timing of when reports were done or when some things were uploaded into the general ledger. So there are some that in the payables, there were charges from prior periods in the amount over the last eight months of two hundred forty-eight thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents, and a payroll charge from February in the amount of eight thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and forty cents. So we could get those proof that everything to date is approved through the twenty sixth, the twenty fifth.
Yes, you're right.
Sorry, these team, uh, accounts payable.
Can you give me that finger again?
Two hundred forty-eight thousand.
No, no, the first one.
Oh, first one, sorry, five hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Yeah, I it's different on our.
There's not exactly, there's not a difference between what we have.
I can't access Dropbox for some reason, so I I know I said it earlier, but I committed the numbers to memory, so we'll just double check.
I think we put, and let's go with Cindy's numbers now for record, and then we'll we'll adjust it back, because I have to say, we should have.
Okay. Uh, anybody want to approve that?
I move you to the look.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coleman, any second. Okay, any opposed or all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it is, that motion carries, those are the, including all the ones that we might have missed by a day or two. Mr. Hart?
Thank you. Chair, just a few things I do want to announce, events coming up, community days coming up, September sixth, we all know it's the biggest day in the park. We expect five to seven, hopefully not eight thousand people, because we didn't really get so big, but I get it, you want to go where the action is, and the best community of the day in Montgomery County. If you want to go there, you know, it's hard, so we expect a big day, and a lot of surprises coming your way, too, which we haven't finalized yet, but stay tuned on that. I do also want to comment, I know you just you just accepted resignation for Supervisor DeSanto effective September fifteenth. The code requires thirty days from that day, fifteenth, that the board appoints someone. So you have to interview the derogatory process you can do to choose someone to fill supervisor DeSanto's seat, which would be for a two-year term to run, is that correct? That's what you're clear, you finish after the person who finished that return. So we have thirty days from the fifteenth, but since you accepted his resignation out, we can theoretically start that process, and we talk about that process, we have done it several different ways in the past, put it out on Facebook, different social media to send resumes or applications, levels of interest in, you know, the board has done interviews, and then come out at a future meeting and appoint. So that's where I'll finalize the details with you all, how you exactly want to do that, but, you know, we've done this before.
It's gonna be somebody under five six. Because when I stand, you can still see the flag, so it's gonna be somebody my size.
So.
No, we don't discriminate.
I agree with that.
That deal will have your.
So I don't have that information pretty soon, but that's something we can move on record ultimately quick, get it out, give a seven or ten day period for people, people will respond quickly if they're interested, we've had experience of this, I will turn it over to you for the board decision. Thanks.
Mr. Coleman, would you like to review the upcoming event?
Absolutely. Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, September ninth, seven P M, zoning hearing board meeting, Wednesday, September seventeenth, seven P M, planning commission meeting, Thursday, September eighteenth, seven P M, human relations commission meeting, Monday, September twenty-second, six-thirty P M, historical advisory committee meeting, Tuesday, September thirteenth, seven P M, board supervisors regularly meeting. Upcoming events, Monday, September first, our offices are closed in observation of Labor Day, and if you love A M radio, and if you love shots of sun, be prepared for Saturday, September sixth, from three to eight P M, our world famous, world renowned in Montgomery County Community Day. And lastly, Monday, September fifteenth, eleven A M bingo, please, 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 R S V P. Thank you very much.
Do we have a band for me? Is it wild, or?
Um, we have, we have a couple bands, and that was a couple already announced instead of.
Oh, sorry, did I sound surprised?
No, it's just just any, it'll be out there. But it's worth it.
Thank you. Um, I'm pumped. Any other citizens to be heard? Yes. Dog Park.
Sponsored by Aqua.
I was there about.
Excuse me, I heard the Dog Park gets sponsored by Aqua.
I was there about two weeks ago, two weeks.
Well, I I can say this, so I know West Garden has got some complaints to open it sooner, I understand, I understand that they get the bulk of the hurry up, let's get this going. The last meeting, and I don't know if if our engineer Chris Donner has any, but I they're still sticking to the two growth seasons.
So what I'm told is this hot summer weather was not kind to the grass seed, and it's now next spring.
So I didn't have those like one body on, just like four.
Yeah, and just for for clarification, so you know, Ms. Donner is also the engineer, one of the engineers for her public for Westmark, so she's more in tune with everything that goes on as far as this or that.
Yeah, you still have to do another fall planting, should they get it really established, because the grass.
It's not patient.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and if you Google this, you'll find out some of them that are open to some truly, and it's a mud pit, and then it closes down for a year after they opened it, and nobody wants that, so. You're a patient man, I know that from experience, I've I've seen you here for a long time, and I'm very confident you'll be patient this spring.
I think if I can, if I may, while I'm out.
I know.
I think there's something to be said for the fact that when they cut the ribbon on the Dog Park, we weren't invited.
Because what?
We weren't invited. It's on it's on their property, they're kind of taking point for it.
That's why, that's why I think they moved it.
Is that why they moved it?
That's probably why, thinking they moved it because they wanted more.
Money or control?
Because originally it was supposed to be next to the entrance to the farm park, to the radio.
Well, they have the control, and basically that's what I'm gonna tell you on my way out the door. I understand it, I appreciate your diligence to come here every month, but really, good at our meeting.
What are they?
I'll I'll let you know what's on their website.
Sam won out.
And Sam won out. Because they're really honestly, like, not to be facetious, they're really the ones with the answers, and they're the ones that have the pressure because they have the money to do what needs to be done in that Dog Park. We're just kind of letting them use our land, that's basically it, so.
And and needing the money, the money's grand money, as you as you know, they took the lead on the grand money, that's why, I mean, we both received it, but one organization had to take, one organization had to take the lead on that. Again, I I'm hopeful, I'm cautiously optimistic it'll be the spring. I hope that instilled some.
Think you feel good about that?
As fast as you say, you won't always get the answer you want. I was like, there's commissioners meeting is September ninth.
There you go.
You're coming on?
It's the second one.
Where's that?
At the at the Township Valley Marshall Street. Got a big sign out front that says, West Garden Township.
And police.
And police.
Love coming to the meeting. Any other citizens to be heard this time?
I'm here, I was standing on my neighbor's lane. With regards to Aqua, it's not about that, it's about what Mr. Rehab, whatever, they were in our neighborhood at this time, street, Mr. Rehab. They went around to residents' homes the day before they were going to be working in front of our homes, and gave us this letter, so we had no notice, we didn't know anything was going on. I don't know if the township was aware of what they were doing.
Mr. Rehab was the company?
Yeah, that's the company, they were they were doing the the pipes, cleaning them out.
It's called Mr. Rehab.
Yeah, I I can tell you that they don't coordinate, surprisingly, but not surprisingly, right? You assume, and we all do, and I since I've been involved in this, I've felt the same thing, you assume that they would coordinate with the townships they're in. I can tell you, and not, I can tell you all these, they will, they will start a project and not tell you, you could have a parade going down.
I worked twenty years for a couple of those things.
Yeah, so Mr. Rehab, I know there's something, there's there's a contract, they don't even come in and tell us, we normally have, we get our complaint, we have to go out and.
Or let's see it on Facebook.
Yeah, or we say, who the who the heck are you? But they don't, they don't have.
Mr. Rehab, they worked by their house, too.
Oh, yeah.
They were there.
Oh, they're going.
They worked.
They're going through.
But and and they worked quicker than they said they were going to be, which was good because, you know, they couldn't go and use, you couldn't wash clothes, you got to take showers.
Yeah.
I personally, my property did not have a problem, but people have been posting on Facebook about that they, when they were digging down to find the players, they were not necessarily finding them, and they were digging all around, and what they were doing was just filling holes back up with sand and like, you know, so I guess it's up to them.
Well, they have to come back and destroy some stuff, but that's so.
Well, is there any, I know that, you know, the sewer system isn't a long part of the township, but is there any oversight that all those farmers, what it does to the properties?
The property owners? Yes, yes, there is, that's a whole, if if there's any issues, you contact us, and we go, we deal with it. And that is, like anything else, if P E O comes out and digs your stuff, and they need to restore it, we would call P E O and say, and shake them, and say, you know.
The work up and eat digs in your yard or the industry and doesn't repair the property.
Yeah, same thing with Verizon.
Yeah, I was gonna say cables, it's the same thing. Flyers did that for tons of property.
A lot of people were, because it just happened in our neighborhood this past week.
Yeah.
So, um, people were really posting on that, literally on Facebook, or something, the township meeting is, board supervisor meeting is tonight, come to the meeting, bring it up.
They never show up.
No, they never.
They knew it was my last night, they didn't want to come.
I'll close next one, and he's gone.
And then the other thing, I, you know, if this is something I should just be talking to you about separate, that's okay, because I don't want to take up almost an hour piss on it. Those trees are on the cul-de-sac at Greatwood.
Yes, and I I have people come out on that, I'll I'll follow up on that.
Actually.
Because any more people.
The thing is, guy that does my yard work, he was saying that one of the trees is just wrapped completely up in vines and dead vines, and he asked me if he wanted me to get the vines down or, you know, lock the tree up, I said, I don't even know if I can touch that tree, it's on my side of crisis fence, but I think it's still.
Right, you don't know for sure.
Yeah.
Our I said our gotcha, I just don't know where it is on our list, because we have so many trees that are in that similar situation that we have to take down.
Can I give you, I'll, if anyone gives me a hand, if you can just give me a call.
Great.
You know, I appreciate you.
Great, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A lot.
Thanks.
Any other citizens to be heard? I think a few of you have it. Just need to share. Okay. Um, well, thank you all for coming, thank you for township staff for being here and for all you do throughout the month, um, thank you to my fellow supervisors, um, anyone who want to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSanto, yes, for this.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSanto, very fitting, that's your last.
Uh, thank you.
Yes, last thing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it is, this is adjourned.